County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
May be seated. As you can tell, we have a couple of board members that are absent, so I'd like to put this motion on the floor. In accordance with the Board of Supervisors bylaws in the Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3708. Dot three, we have two members who are unable to attend tonight's meeting in person for personal reasons. One for vacation and one for work, but both wish to participate remotely. Therefore, I move that the Board of Supervisors allow Supervisor Jason Bellows and Supervisor Bill Smith to participate remotely in the meetings tonight. Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. All right. Mr. Bellows and Mr. Bellows, Mr. Smith, are you part of this meeting?
I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you, you're online. Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith? He'll probably come in a little later.
He just.
Hey, can you hear me? Helen?
Hear you now, I hear you now, okay, you're part of this meeting.
Hey, I'm eastbound or down. Enter your way.
All right.
What did he say?
All right. Let's get moving here. All right. We will start off with the public hearing. We have allowed three minutes. At the end of two minutes, we give you a notice that you have only one minute left, so please adhere to that. Get right to the point, so we can hear what you have to say, and you can have plenty of time to do it. Okay? Floor is now open for public input session. Anyone? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. Public input session is now closed. We don't.
Good evening, it's good to be with you all. Sorry I missed you the last month. But we've been busy. We've cut brush on Belle Isle Road, Lee Town, Granville Bay, and Rocky Neck. We completed the mowing and litter pickup on the secondary routes. We did some dredging work at the ferry on the Ottoman side. We patched some roads with asphalt in Devil's Bottom, Moran Creek, and Beach Road. And then we've kept up with potholes and workhorses countywide. We're still working on brush on Beulah Road. We have pipes to clean on Greentown and Mosquito Point. We have a pipe replacement coming up on Woods Drive. The mowing and litter pickup on the primary routes is underway. And we're getting ready to start sweeping some curb and gutter throughout the county. The trench widening out here on Route Three is complete now. And I think that's all the updates I have for you all. You have any questions for me?
Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Comments? Okay, no questions, no comments, thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you for the good job you all do. Keep up the good work. Okay. Next one. Presentations. Mr. Carter.
Good evening. Jimmy Carter, Whitestone. Actually, I'm living in the Hills Quarter project, I'm Mr. Lee's area. So tonight, I'm here representing Rappahannock General Hospital. And with me, I'm proud to have Dr. Bessie Brown, who is our CEO of Rappahannock General Hospital.
Welcome aboard.
Good morning, our afternoon now, right? Day's been long.
So, Bessie recently got her doctorate in health leadership. She's got, Bessie's got an amazing story. She graduated with the GED from high school, and now she's got her doctorate, and she tells me now she wants to go into law school, so. So she is, she's an amazing leader at Rappahannock General. We're so proud of her and what she's accomplished, and you'll be hearing a little bit about that in our short presentation. You know, I think you all have heard me say before, when I say about the hospital, is the hospital is important not only to the medical health of this community, but it's important to the economic health of this community. If we don't have good healthcare, we're not going to hold retirees here, we're not going to attract retirees, and we know that that's a big part of our economy. And so, we're proud of what it does to serve this community. I had been working for the foundation, we recently, this community had an amazing aid pouring. We raised $21 million to help improve the hospital, which was, we raised more money for Bon Secour, Virginia than any other hospital. And that speaks volumes, you know, when we first made this merger with Bon Secour, we set out to make a, you only get one opportunity to make a first impression, and we wanted to make a first impression that this was a community who even though we were merging into their system, we still saw this as our community hospital. We valued it, and we thought, what we, our concerns were that being their smallest hospital, we might get lost if we didn't make a positive first impression. And just, I can't tell you how impressed Bon Secour is with Rappahannock General Hospital in this community. We've made that first impression, and things are going really well. So while we, while the community's invested a lot of money in the hospital, Bon Secour has matched us equally with their improvements, and we'll talk about some of those initiatives. Recently, I moved off of the foundation and moved into the, I just got elected to the Bon Secour Richmond Market Board, and Jeff Zupersky is on that board also. So we've got, out of the members on the Richmond Market Board, which is seven hospitals, we're well represented with Jeff and I being on that board. I'll be vice chair of the board this year, and then next year, I'll be board chair for the seven hospitals. So I think we're, we're in a good position to be advocating for this hospital. And as you know, Jeff's an amazing leader, and so to have him on that board also gives us great coverage. So, Bessie joined us, she's been at the hospital for three years. Starting last January, she took over as CEO, a hospital administrator. And I just, just can't tell you what an amazing job. She was our director of nursing. I always say that the nurses really run the hospital, everybody else is just bit players. It's really, it's really, you know, the nurses really make things work. And so with Bessie's background and deep background in nursing leadership was a real plus when it came to running the hospital. So let's see, what's that next slide? So, you know, we are, as you know, we're a faith-based Catholic hospital system. And I can say at every meeting that I sit in, Bon Secour is really driven by their mission of taking care of the well-being of those who are, who are in need, especially people who are poor, dying, and undeserved. And we, I'm always impressed, you know, one of the reasons we went with Bon Secour versus other options was because we thought that going with a faith-based mission hospital was better than going with a hospital system that was driven by money. And I can tell you, I've never sat in a meeting where Bon Secour talked about money. They always say, take care of the patient, and we'll figure the other eight later, but focus on the patient. And so, let's look at that next slide. Thanks, Glenn. So, Bessie, I'll turn it over to you to talk about the hospital itself.
Thank you, Jimmy. Good afternoon, everyone. As he said, I am Dr. Bessie Brown. If my dialect did not give it away, I am from the Appalachian Mountains of Virginia, and so have served my entire career in healthcare in rural health areas. Really have a heart for rural health, as you heard Jimmy say. Started out with a GED, started my law school January 12th. So let's talk about Rappahannock and why it's so important as part of our community to add on to what Jimmy has said. For our inpatient services, we do have med surg telemetry services. We have our swing bed program. Swing bed, I just want to explain here just for a second. Let's say that you come in to the hospital, someone tells you, oh, Lord, you need a joint replaced. You go up to Richmond and you have that joint replaced. It's very hard, we all know, to have your family member in the Richmond area and be able to go back and forth each day. We are very blessed at Rappahannock that with that swing bed program, as part of a critical access hospital, you could be brought back to our hospital, and it's covered. So very happy to have that swing bed program. We have our inpatient behavioral health program, surgical services. We are working on recruiting a couple more surgeons, so more to come on that. Jimmy and I are doing our best to get people to the area, to stay in the area, to do surgery, inpatient rehab.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Do you presently have somebody in the area?
We do, we do have a couple surgeons, but we need an orthos surgeon. So working very hard on getting one down here full-time. So important for us to have that, especially in our community, as you all know. A inpatient hospice, inpatient rehab, our sleep lab, our outpatient services is our emergency room, endoscopy, outpatient surgery, outpatient infusion, that's any infusion you may need to have, whether that is chemo, blood, iron, any of the new medications that's coming out that is by infusion. Our imaging services, lab and blood bank services, outpatient rehab services, outpatient behavioral health with an IOP program. You may ask, what does an IOP program mean, and what does it do? For any of our behavioral health or mental health patients in our community that needs that little bit more intensive services, but not in the hospital, we actually have two vans that will go out and pick up those patients, bring them to our IOP program. They spend Monday through Friday all day long with us, and we feed them lunch before we take them back home. That is to give them that more intensive assistance to keep them on the right track. And then, of course, our four rural health clinics. Next slide, please. Our, you heard Jimmy talk about the projects and the money that was raised by the community. The ED and café renovations that you saw on that first slide was 14.5 million of that 21 million. We are looking forward to being the first geothermal hospital in the state of Virginia. And Bon Secour put the money in for that, was 10 million. Our OPEC renovations, which you're going to see a picture of here in a moment, was 3.2 million. Our lab that we're currently working on getting the best analyzers there is out there in the market today, 2.1 million. Our CT upgrade, 1.8. Our pharmacy upgrade, 1.8. Project Voyager, let's talk about Project Voyager real quick. Fancy name for something that's just absolutely wonderful. So our nurses on med surg now does not have to go and type. We have ambient documentation. You say, what's ambient documentation? Let's pretend right now that I am talking to you as a patient. It documents that in the chart. The only other hospital in the nation currently that has that is the Mayo Clinic. We are the first one with Bon Secour, we partnered with the Mayo Clinic to do that. We are piloting it here at Rappahannock. But the future of Bon Secour is that ambient documentation in all of our hospitals throughout the Richmond market. Projects on the horizon is.
So what that means is when the doctor's in the room with you, he can put his phone on the table, and AI will record the conversation, so that the doctor can spend their time having a personal relationship with the patient, and not have to be typing. Then AI takes that conversation, it will take out any of the chit-chat, take the important information, and put it directly into the medical records. Amazing technology in order to make the patient experience a better experience and help outcomes. So we're, it's important for you to understand that Rappahannock General is on the cutting edge of technology. All of the diagnostic equipment that Bessie just outlined, if someone presents to the hospital, we've got the CT scanner for a second. You know, we're probably the smallest stroke-certified hospital in America, we believe. And so when someone presents to the hospital with a stroke, we know that anecdotally, we might be the most elderly-serving hospital in America. Eighty percent of our business is in Northumberland and Lancaster, and Northumberland and Lancaster, as we always are talking about, are the two most elderly rural contiguous counties in America. Did I say anecdotally? Rappahannock is probably the most elderly-serving hospital in America. So having the abilities to be stroke proficient, we're using a lot of technology. Someone presents, we have a robot, for example, that you need a neurologist to try to figure out if you, what type of stroke someone's having. You don't want to give a clot buster, for example, to someone that's having a bleed stroke versus a clot stroke. So you've got to have a neurologist. We use a robot that comes to the bedside, it's got the picture of the neurologist, who could be in Richmond or California, on the robot. The robot has cameras, they're looking at the patient, and so between robot, the CT scanner that we just got, which cost us like, what, $750,000 or something?
1.8 total.
Oh, excuse me, 1 point, what's that extra million here? The, it used to take us 20 to 30 minutes to stitch all the imaging together for the neurologist. The new CT scanner does it in 90 seconds. So being able to save 20-plus minutes when someone's having a stroke is a really big deal. So the investments that are made in equipment at Rappahannock General is extraordinary. We've got amazing equipment to be able to diagnose. The other thing is, is that it's important to know that, you know, we probably see, what, 1,100, how many patients do we see in the ED?
Last month, 1,281.
So we're averaging 1,100, 1,200 patients, and the important thing to understand is that we can take most care of most of those patients locally. We only ship.
Last month, we shipped 81 patients.
So we're shipping like, like, less, maybe, you know, 6% of our patients are getting shipped. So it's important to understand that most people are staying here. Yes, Bill?
I think the perception is, though, in the community, that you're shipping way more than that.
That's right.
And I say that because Monday night, I had a conversation with a gentleman that I talk to all the time. And he had an episode a couple weeks ago, and he told me, he said, I didn't go to RGH, he went to Riverside. He said, because I didn't want to be transferred to Regional Memorial, because of his wife and stuff like that. And so the perception is, if I go to RGH, they just don't send me to Regional Memorial. And so that is the perception, whether it's real or not.
Right.
The community believes that's what's going on.
Yeah. So only a small percentage could ship, and obviously, we're a small hospital. So if someone's having something complicated, you want to get them out of here. You know, and so, so if it's complicated, we ship them up to Memorial or St. Mary's. But most, you know, over 90%, 95% of the patients stay here, and we're treated locally.
And you know, that that you brought up, like you said, perception is reality, right? So we've got to change that perception, and I'm looking forward to changing that perception.
This gentleman's 84 years old, so he, you know, and his wife is up there, so he said, I didn't want to be in Richmond, and she over here in Ophelia, and.
And you can understand that completely, right?
Yeah.
So a couple things that Jimmy said I'd like to touch on before we move to the next slide. Talking about the ambient documentation, when the nurses are in the room, it's not even, let's say that we have a demented patient. This is a true example. And so you can't use the words SCDs to a demented patient. They don't know what that means, and really don't care, right? So when the nurse is explaining, I'm going to put these squeezy things on your legs, and it's going to help keep you from getting a blood clot, that system actually picked up and documented SCDs placed on the patient. So very proud of that. The other thing I want to talk about that Jimmy talked about, if a rescue squad calls us and says, hey, we have a patient that we are so sure is going to need to go up to the, up the road because they're having a bleeding stroke. We all know that we are not equipped here at Rappahannock to take care of that, because you need a neurologist that can do the surgery. So immediately when we get that call from the rescue squad, we have a bird in the air, a helicopter, that is landing sometimes before our patient gets to us. And that's so important, even though I know people don't like to go up the road, if you're having that type of stroke, we really need you to go up the road for that, and then come back to us. It's so important to have that helicopter waiting for you there, where we do cut all that time down. Next slide, please.
In reality, we can probably get you on the operating room table faster than if you were being transported across the city of Richmond.
Correct.
It's, it's, time-wise, it's pretty seamless.
We have what we call in Bon Secour, the, it's a brain that somebody is just a little metal brain someone had, and they, they, it's called the lobe award, and someone painted it gold. We've, we are very competitive among our hospitals. Not too long ago, we had the lobe award, which meant that we got our stroke patients for that quarter up and treated in Richmond in less than 20 minutes. That's amazing. Our couple pictures here for what we are doing, you see the new OPEC on your left-hand side, if you're looking at the screen. It's a beautiful place to come and get treatment if you have to get any kind of infusion. And then the two right-handed pictures is our geothermal field, and we will continue to working on that and should have it up and running at the first quarter of the year of '26. Next slide. Awards and celebrations. You've heard Jimmy mention a couple of them. We do believe, and our American Heart Association does believe also, she is looking, because I want to brag that, I like to brag about our hospital. I want to say that I know for a fact, and she's looking, that we are the smallest stroke-certified hospital in the nation. We're very proud of getting that award every time, every quarter. Last year, or this past May, time flies, Lord have mercy, y'all. VCU Health gives out the Shining Night Gala Award. The Shining Night Award is for the best trauma care in the state of Virginia by a hospital system that that patient would not have lived if we did not stabilize them here and get them to VCU, a Level 1 Trauma Unit. This patient, not only were we able to stabilize them and keep them alive here, there was a rainstorm going on where a helicopter could not come and pick this patient up. So we worked to keep this patient alive longer than what usually when a helicopter can land here at Rappahannock. And not only were we successful in that, VCU recognized us and gave us the award for the state. Of course, Best of Virginia, that is fourth year in a row. And then our Shining Star Awards, our recognition awards, and the Heart Get With The Guidelines Awards. Next slide.
So here's something really important that just happened last week. So we get accredited by something.
You keep stealing my thunder. Yes.
Well, you know, you know me, give me a microphone, I'm ready to go, man.
Go for it, go for it.
All right, I'm going to brag then.
Then you brag.
All right. So we get, we get, we get reviewed by something called the Joint Commission. They come in, and they, your Joint Commission certified, this is a high-level review of the hospital, and they come in, they look at the facility, I mean, they go into the firewall, they look at the height of the hand sanitizer off the floor. I mean, it's so detailed. And they look at your clinical services. The other day, they had me in for the exit interview on the, on the clinical services side. The reviewer said that she had been doing, that she had a big healthcare background. She said she's been reviewing hospitals for four years, probably done 50 of these reviews, and she said.
Quote, "This is the best survey she's ever done," and that we should be a magnet hospital, and I have to agree with her.
So we were the best hospital she's ever reviewed.
Ever. And they stayed four days, usually for a critical access hospital, it's a three-day at the most. She really went through our stuff. She was trying, and she admitted, she's like, I tried really hard and I couldn't find anything. So we're very proud, as Jimmy likes to say, we compete, as y'all can see, the brag of most about the hospital. But very proud of that survey. Lot of people in this community has worked a lot of years at that hospital and put in a lot of work to make sure that we have that, that survey. Meeting our community needs, if we can't get through those last two or three here. For our 2025 was chronic disease and prevention, mental health, violence and trauma, social and economic disparity, engagement and inclusion. Next slide. All right, next slide was, thank you, questions.
I think questions? I think, I think Mr. Smith has his hand, hand up remotely.
Hey, Bill, you got a question for us?
Mr. Smith?
I do, I have both hands on the wheel, though.
Don't wreck, you're not in Lancaster County.
No wrecking. Hey, so if you would just touch on that, that label of critical access hospital.
Sure.
Because that's important, because it does give us, we are limited with lots of things. Like I think it's, we can have no more than 25 beds, and, and all kinds of things that, that limit us from a regular hospital. What I wanted to ask is, this board is very proactive and growing our area. We want people to come in, we want young people to come in, and we want to, we want to be bigger, smart, do it the smart way, but, but to be bigger. And is there a chance that we may graduate from a critical access hospital into a more of a full-service hospital at some point?
Bill, I don't think so. Here's, here's the deal we looked at. So we were originally, when, when, when we were a standalone hospital before the merger, I was on that board, and I was heading up Strategic Planning Committee, trying to figure out how we were going to keep the hospital open. We, we were going to become, we, as a standalone hospital, we looked at becoming a critical access hospital, and we were ready to pull the trigger on that, but we decided we were going to merge with somebody, we'd let them pull the trigger. Here's what we found out, and I'd say this is analogous to like McDonald's. In 1977, when the hospital was built, McDonald's didn't have a drive-through window. Now, when you go to McDonald's, everything's through the drive-through window. Well, that's sort of true for healthcare, too. What's happened over the ensuing years is that all the services basically have moved to outpatient services. So the, the real need for inpatient hospital beds has decreased dramatically over time. For example, it used to be where you were in the hospital at 1977, if you had a colonostomy. Well, now, now, I mean, my niece had a baby the other day, and she was home in four hours. I mean, if you get a hip replacement, you don't stay in the hospital. The model has really moved to say, you really don't want to be in a hospital unless you have to be. There are a lot of germs, there are other things, and people are just happier being at home. So as the community grows, Bill, I, I think that, that we'll be stabilized as a critical access hospital, that we can meet the needs of this community and not get beyond that. The advantage for us as a critical access hospital is we get cost-based reimbursement for our Medicare services. You know, one of the problems when we looked, we were concerned that this hospital was going to close back before the merger was because so many of our elderly patients here, you know, being the most elderly serving hospital in America, we have an abnormally large Medicare. Doesn't make any difference, a person lives on Curtis Creek and is a zillionaire, when they come in the hospital, Medicaid is, Medicare is paying their bill, because they're over 65. So I don't, Bill, I think we can accommodate the growth of the community and still keep our critical access hospital. There are 1,300 critical access hospitals in America. There are seven in Virginia. It's a model that works well. I think that the trade-offs for us for financial stability is, is worth it for this community in order to be able to invest these monies in other types of things. And I think we're in good hands being a critical access hospital. I hope that answers your question.
It, it does, and I think with that label of critical access, you, you're guaranteed that the big insurance companies won't try to, to, to lower their pay coming your way.
That's right.
I read an article about that recently. But maybe, maybe something to consider is that I'm sure there are different levels of critical hospital. Maybe at some point, Rappahannock could be the critical hospital on steroids.
There you go. Well, I think we are, from, from those awards that you've seen. So, you know, I think that's a perception in the community that because you're a small rural hospital, that maybe you're not delivering great care. What, what we hope, we're trying to get the message out there to say is that, that this is an extraordinary hospital. I mean, when you hear the Joint Commission saying this is the best hospital they reviewed, when you look at the awards we're getting, when you see that we're, we're the smallest stroke-certified hospital in America, when you see the types of equipment, the investments that are being made, and a lot of that has to do with, do with the givingness of this community, I think that, I think we're in really good shape. I couldn't be prouder of. I couldn't be prouder of, of, of where we are and, and what's going on.
I agree and you give, give Bessie my phone number and I'll do whatever I can to promote the hospital and educate everyone on what we offer.
So now, we know you all-
I think the, uh, I think the challenge here is, is changing the perception.
Yes.
That's the challenge and, and, uh-
Right.
Because, uh, like we said, cha- perception, that's reality to most people.
That's right.
And I don't know why it is, but the negatism, negative stuff travels faster than positives.
That's right.
So you gotta keep pumping the positive messages out there, what the hospital is doing.
And the other message we really want to get across, uh, Mr. Lee, is that, uh, that this hospital is a note, is not in jeopardy of closing. There were some newspaper articles and things out there that said that we might be on the, on the potential close list. Bonsecor has made it clear that, 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 that this hospital is here to stay and that, that we don't have any problems in terms of looking at any, any closing. So we're in good shape.
Well, I want to thank you for the presentation. It, it brought me up to date as to what's going on because I, I had some concerns.
Great.
But you have already addressed those for me.
Good. And we would, we'd be honored anytime if any of the board members would like to come down, take a tour of the hospital. Bessie would, would, would love to take you around and, and show you what we're doing. But there's a lot to be proud of and, and this, the message is, this hospital is open. It's, it's an amazing rural hospital for its size. We're delivering great service and we're not going anywhere. We thank you and we appreciate what you all do.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Pittman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, got a few slides for you to give you update on where we are with the high school project. Uh, October's been kind to us weather-wise, so we, we've, we've had a good month, um, at the job site. This is our two-week look ahead. Um, again, you can tell the amount of people on site is, is pretty big with all the subs, um, that we got there. Um, pretty self-explanatory, but if, if you see something on there you want to explain, please let me know. Um, I always show this, so just to give you a clear idea about all the subs that are on the, on the job. This picture was taken a month ago, uh, so this is closer to the end of September, before the September board meeting. And the next slide will show you the progress that's been made. Um, I don't know what I'm gonna do in a few months because these, these slides are gonna get less and less impressive, um, as we move through the construction. But, uh, it does give you a good idea about, um, you know, the progress that's been made. Just on the outside of the building, uh, you know, it really doesn't touch on much on what's happening on the inside, but, um, this is on the front side. They are working their way, um, they're on the west side of the building right now, so closer to Old St. John Road and working towards the front of the building, uh, with the break. Next three slides, I wanted to give you a clear indication about, um, the level of finish where they are on the academic wing. Um, so the academic wing's three floors. This is the lowest floor, level zero. And so the next slide will show you how it's a little bit less finished. So levels, level zero is a little bit further along, uh, as they were putting the roof on the building and they worked their way up through the building. And you can see on level two on the next slide, how it's just framing and the drywall. Uh, but gives you an idea about, you know, what that hallway is gonna look like and, um, where, where we are. This is the set of stairs, main stairwell. Uh, it's sort of a focal point in the center of the school. Uh, the kitchen area will be up on the level one and, um, you know, it's, it's a big space. They can use it as a breakout space, uh, for a class to come into or possibly even use it for lunches. Uh, the kids can sit out and look out back towards, uh, the back of the property. This is, uh, the sped room. This is on level zero. Again, that, this is a little further along than some of the other parts of the building. Uh, but just to give you an idea of the space, um, it's impressive, the, the size of the classrooms. One thing that's different in this school versus the current high school is the different sized rooms that we have. So a lot of the rooms in the current high school are standard classrooms, sort of cut up the same way. Uh, this building's got smaller rooms, medium-sized rooms and larger classrooms, uh, just to make it a little bit more, uh, utilitarian. This is actually gonna be the laundry lab. Uh, this is a new space. It's not something that we currently have, uh, but it's based on a need. A lot of the students, um, need a place to actually come wash their clothes and, uh, this, this will allow them to do that. More, more and more schools are putting this in. This is the academic, um, not, my bad, administration, administration, uh, area, uh, just gives you an idea about where they are with that. So this is on the front side of the building, uh, as you come in. All, next few pictures will be on level one. Um, this is auditorium. Um, they're, they're starting to frame in for the walls and that. And I guess one takeaway from all these pictures that I'm showing you is you can kind of get an idea about how spread out everybody is throughout the building. It's not like there's a group of people just working in one area. Uh, there's a lot of cars out there, but they are spread out and everybody's got plenty of work to do. Um, but at this point, they're able to store a lot of material inside the building, so I'm hoping you're picking up on some of that too. Uh, so they're not having to wait for, you know, um, parts and pieces as they need them. Get to next slide. This is the aux gym, uh, so it's basically just the size of a gym floor. Um, we needed this space, um, with the seventh and eighth grades being part of the high school curriculum, um, so that, you know, both of those grade levels could, could utilize that and not be with the older kids. Uh, so glass is starting to go into the backside of the building. If you, if you drive back through Old St. John's, you can see that the guys are working hard on getting the glass installed. And this is kind of a neat shot looking over to the back of the property. Uh, where that excavator is, they're leveling out the practice field. Uh, so that's, that's where that is, but it just gives you an idea about the amount of light coming into the classroom, which will be a huge, um, asset for the, you know, our current classrooms have very little daylight coming in them, so this will be a big di- difference. Uh, this is part of our, uh, HVAC system. This is the DOAS, it's dedicated outside air. Uh, this is up on level two, um, closer to the roof. It'll bring in fresh air to the whole building. There's two of those units, one on each wing of the academic portion. Uh, we have a geothermal well as well, so, um, in a race with the hospital, so you can get there first. This is the, uh, sort of the career center, if you will. There's a big focus on getting our kids prepared for, um, school once they graduate and, uh, so that's sort of a shift in our curriculum, but it's more focused on getting these kids employed, uh, enlisted or enrolled in college and, um, some breakout spaces for the offices on that. And this is a, a lab, uh, towards, this is on the east side of the building and you can kind of get an idea because it's looking over the football field. Um, but it's a, sort of a Mecker space is how they, they refer to these spaces, but it's, it's, you know, STEM lab is basically what it is. Uh, you probably noticed the cars parked over in Dream Fields. Uh, we've had them over there for the past week, I guess. They've been staking out the parking lot and, um, I think they're gonna get some curbs put in as early as next week and hopefully the paving will start late next week. Looks like the weather is gonna be good for us, so, um, hoping to get some asphalt in. Any questions?
Travis, you might want to bring all the board up on the, the donation for the trees, that type of thing, because that was some good news this week too.
Yeah, so we did get a donation, uh, I believe the Northern Act Planning Commission was the, there's a lot of organizations tied into that email. And Olivia might know some more, you don't know anything about this, but, so, uh, the Department of Forestry, I guess, gave grants and the Northern Act Planning District Commission sort of, they reached out to us about six months ago about this. It's a huge deal for us because, to be honest, the, the budget, our budget didn't have a whole lot of trees in it and, um, if anybody had ridden by Westmoreland, when they finished their project, they were sorting the same predicament that we were. Um, it's just, you know, landscaping is one of the last things you sort of get to going through this process. But, um, because of the, and I forget the term for this, like semi-quintcentennial or something like that, for the 250th-
250.
Yeah. Anniversary, that, that's what it's based on. So we're gonna be getting 250 trees, um, to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the Which is a big deal, it's, it's a lot of trees.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bateman? Mr. Bateman and Mr. Bruce Julian together, okay?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, uh, provide you an update on our recreation parks, uh, projects, uh, starting with, uh, Westland Beach update. Uh, just a reminder to the public, the beach and the fishing pier are closed, uh, and, uh, we do have a camera on site, so we can see out there. If you're out there, if you're on candid camera, so smile. Uh, and, and a reminder that, uh, we're having our, uh, this chamber, Lancaster by the Bay Chamber is having its premier annual event, uh, and we are hosting that event. It's called Taste on the Point. That'll be occurring November 22nd between 12:00 and 4:00 PM. Uh, I did derive these pictures from our camera because the weather was, didn't really permit drone shots or good photos this week. Uh, this was taken on the 26th, uh, overlooking our, our fishing pier. Uh, this photo was taken on the 28th. Uh, it's a panoramic shot showing the fishing pier and our, uh, comfort station and parking area. Uh, this photo was taken today, uh, and this shows our, our fishing pier. And, uh, this photo was also taken today. You, you can see the rapid progress that's being made on landscaping, uh, and so the, uh, the contractor is moving very quickly, uh, towards completing phase two by November 4th, which is next week, election day. Uh, and remaining work is just landscaping. Uh, for phase one, uh, the fear fish cleaning stations are still being worked on, uh, and the beach and dune revegetation is, uh, probably gonna be scheduled for the spring when planting, uh, when planting times are optimal. Moving on to Harper's Creek Access.
One question has been asked. November the 4th, fishing pier gonna be open?
The, uh, I mean, that's, that's the date for, uh, substantial completion, but final completion is later than that and I don't have that schedule in front of me.
That's right.
Uh, so, uh, I, it's not gonna be open on November 4th, but it'll be, you know, a week or so after that. It's, yeah. November 4th is just substantial completion.
22nd of June.
Yeah. And, and that's, I was gonna bring this up on the county administrative report, but since we're talking about Windmill Point now, it seems prudent to bring this up now. Uh, Mr. Bellows and I have been talking about the possibility of scheduling a grand opening, whether we do that this fall, since, uh, we're gonna be, you know, utilizing the Windmill Point Park, uh, for the Taste of the Point event on November 22nd. Or do we wait until more favorable weather next spring, uh, when the plantings are done on the dunes, uh, and the fish cleaning stations are, are in? They've been ordered, uh, but they, they, we haven't received them yet and they're not installed. So, uh, that's really a question for the board. What's your, what's your pleasure on, uh, scheduling a grand opening at the Windmill Point Park? Should it be this fall or should it be next spring?
You know, with the, with the questions that I've been getting, I, if we delay it, it's already gonna be open. You know, if we delay it to spring and have a grand open, it's actually already open. It's gonna be open in November.
That's right.
And people, they are anxious to get on that pier. They are anxious to get on it. So I, you know, the weather, the weather, uh, I was, I would say we, we do it this fall myself.
Okay.
That's, that's my, just because people want to use it.
I think it sends a-
I concur with Bill.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, uh, okay. So you in agreement with the fall?
Yeah.
Mr. Bellows?
I think I heard him say he concurs with Bill.
That's what he said?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. I, I think we need to get it open as soon as we possibly can and, uh, prior to the Taste of the Point event.
All right. Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Um, Mr. Bailey, I, I would certainly be in favor of, um, of, of having it in the spring.
In the spring.
Instead of trying to rush something for, um, for the fall and not sure about the weather.
All right. Do we put this to a vote? Well, actually, we've got four to one, basically, because I'm in favor of the fall. Because it made a good point, you know, because it's gonna be already open.
Yeah.
So, so make it official by doing it in the fall. And we can, you still have some good weather in the fall, we can choose, yeah. Well, the thing is, November the 1st is siren.
Yeah.
Then we, if we're gonna do it before the 22nd-
Yeah.
We only got a couple weeks.
We got three weeks. So, uh, just to check everybody's calendars, what would say Friday, February 14th look like? Anybody have conflicts with that? I know we've got that in the morning, but I'm talking afternoon.
You said Friday, what?
Friday, February 14th in the afternoon.
November, you mean, right? You mean November, right?
Yeah, what did I say?
February.
Oh.
You said it twice.
I'm sorry. All right, okay. November 14th.
November 14th is good for me.
Yeah.
Works for you? All right, Mr. Bellows, Mr. Smith, work for y'all? November 14th?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay.
February 14th, my wife's taking me to dinner for that. But, but I'm good for November.
Okay, right.
I will, we'll, uh, we'll work on scheduling something for the, uh, November the 14th in the afternoon.
All right, and you gonna send us something?
Yes.
And we, and we can work something up for the paper and the radio station.
All right.
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
How did, I saw some pictures of when the nor'easter came through and there was some high water and stuff. How did everything make out after, after that receded? Was it any major problems?
Uh, I'll let our Director of Planning and Land Use answer that question.
Okay. It made out really well. Um, so we had some sand move, uh, in that nor'easter, but really it just pushed the sand back landward. Um, so eventually in the spring, before we do those plantings, we'll probably do a little bit more sand nourishment, particularly right in front of British Landing next to the pier. Um, but the breakwaters held up well. The plantings actually needed that water, so, um, they were very, uh, they were not looking great when they were installed because it was so windy those two days. Um, but, so I don't think that hurt them, but we do have a, uh, agreement where we have a warranty for one year on the plants. Um, so they'll reevaluate that in the spring and if anything's dead, we'll, we'll get it replaced and we won't be charged for that.
Good, okay, sounds good.
Ready to move on, sir? Um, Harper's Creek, uh, access update. Um, progress is moving along very rapidly there as well. Um, these pictures are courtesy of Nate Everett, uh, Still Kicking Seafood. Uh, this shows the parking lot adjacent to the fishing pier, which you can see off to the left. Um, this shot shows the parking lot with the handicap accessible parking, uh, to, to the left and our boat, uh, our ramp. This shot is across the parking lot of the, uh, processing facility, uh, also shows the , uh, wellhouse. Uh, these are trailer, uh, boat trailer, uh, parking spaces. Uh, this shot shows the wellhouse. Uh, this shot shows, uh, uh, back across the parking lot towards our comfort station, uh, and some additional, uh, accessible parking. Uh, and then this final shot shows, uh, the, the comfort station and, uh, uh, the accessible parking and walkway to it. Uh, so it, it is moving quickly and, uh, remaining on the comfort station are some interior fixtures and trim out. Uh, site work includes curbing, uh, and that should say landscaping, forgive the, uh, typ- typographical error. Uh, roadway, uh, uh, pull-offs and grading and gravel, uh, have yet to be, uh, done, uh, targeting completion date for early of 2026. date for early of 2026. Any questions?
Looks good.
Yeah, looks nice.
Moving on to Taylor Creek. As you all know, Taylor Creek was bid out. A pre-bid meeting's been completed, and bid, bid opening is tomorrow. We've gotten a really good response rate from contractors that may be interested in the project. Again, just general, a projected timeline is a potential award at, at the November meeting, and then a construction period that would begin in January with final completion in September of 2026. Just a reminder, this is a, a photo of the concept plan for the park that includes overlooks, ADA accessible canoe kayak launch, walking paths, comfort station, parking. And then this is a, a page of the master layout from the set of plans that went out to bid. So this shows the final design that's being bid on, and it shows those, those same features. I believe there was some minor deviation from the conceptual plan, but generally speaking, that all those features are, are still there.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Carticove Park update. Site design status is at 80%, with sewer at 90%. JPA prep and some middle status 75%. Again, target project timeline is publish an invitation for bids in January of 2026, so just a few months, with a potential bid opening in March, a contract award in March, and a construction period that would go from May 2026 to February of 2027. Chesapeake Trail Park update. There's been some movement on the NEPA, a progress, that's in, the JPA and full NEPA that's in progress. A set of 30% plans has been completed by Bay Design Group, and I've added some pictures, which is very hard to read, but this is, these are the 30% plans. Hill, Hill Court Tennis Park update. Again, the county's considering six tennis courts, six pickleball courts with parking. The concept plan that was distributed in July is still receiving input, and we've been, been engaging with a group called the Northern Neck Racket Association, who plan to put together programming for, for, for use at the site. Triway Trail update. Again, just to remind you, this is a multimodal trail that would eventually connect the towns of Kimornick, Whitestone, and Irvington. Phase 1B is complete, is, Phase 1B has been split into two sections. Section 1, between Middlegate and Compass is underway using congressionally designated spending that we, funding that we got. Section 2, Phase 1A to Middlegate is the subject of a 2027 VDOT TAP application, and we have some time to wait until we hear whether or not that project was funded. Planning and acquisition focuses, continues to be on Phase 2, both between Kimornick and Harris Road Trailhead and between Compass to Irvington Town Commons. Phase 2 right-of-way and preliminary engineering is underway and is being funded through a National Park Service Chesapeake Gateways Grant of $100,000, although progress on that is on hold because of the federal government shutdown. Any questions at all? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
I just said thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. Now, let's move on to the public hearing.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Thank you.
I'll let you down, Bruce, sorry.
Just 30 seconds here. I just want to also let Jimmy know that the only reason I'm standing here before you tonight, helping on the parks, is that Bonsecor saved my life two times. So anybody that bad mouse the hospital, I take issue with that. So that's the reason, I guess that's the excuse I'm here. Two times. You can get, you can get up pretty fast in a helicopter, too. I want to thank, I just want to thank the board for your continued commitment and support on this long journey to bring these county parks to a reality, so that all citizens, all citizens, can enjoy our shared natural resources. While I live in Bill Smith's district, I feel that I'm represented by all of you, because you represent everybody. Some of us here tonight have a natural knack, Don, to create conflict. I sure wish Jim Cornwell was here. I hear, I know he's listening, but some of us have a natural knack to do that. However, there's one person on your staff that has tremendous skills to resolve conflicts, build consensus, and find sound solutions on common ground. There are many bumps in the road as we, as we get these parks online, along with all the other projects you guys envision, but this person has tremendous skills to resolve conflicts, build consensus, and find sound solutions on common ground. There are many bumps in the road that few of us realize that are overcome, as daily work is accomplished for the county. The behind-the-scenes work that this person accomplishes is quiet, yet remarkable. This person works closely with state and federal agencies to ensure not only the county projects move forward, but also tirelessly assists individual landowners to help protect their properties and the natural resources in our watershed. This person is Olivia Hall.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. How did I know that was gonna be? Thank you. All right. And let's move on. Public hearing. Mr. Bateman? You got something you want to present for them?
Yeah, yes, sir. One moment, please.
Okay.
Up for consideration is a resolution to authorize county administration to apply to the Virginia Department of Housing Committee Development for an amendment to the Lancaster Enterprise Zone 50B. In 2000, Lancaster County adopted, it entered into a joint regional enterprise zone with five other jurisdictions in the Northern Neck, Northumberland County, Richmond County, Westmoreland County, Town of Warsaw, and the Town of Kimornick. In 2024, Lancaster County and the five other jurisdictions renewed the joint regional enterprise zone, and that joint zone will remain active through 2033. Lancaster County locally administers Lancaster Enterprise Zone 50B. The county utilizes the enterprise zone and the incentives eligible therein to promote investment in business expansion and job creation. The Virginia Enterprise Zone Program is a partnership between state and local government that encourages job creation and private investment. VEC accomplishes this by designating enterprise zones throughout the state and providing two grant-based incentives, the Job Creation Grant and the Real Property Investment Grant, to qualified investors and job creators within those zones, while the locality provides the local incentives. In, in administering the local zone, our goal is to work with property owners to ensure they know about the zone and the incentives that are available for investment, and that they also know the processes by which they can have their properties added or deleted from the zone. Recently, I've received requests from property owners who wish to have their properties added to the enterprise zone. Those properties either plan to or have some future plan to make investments that qualify, and that's why we're requesting that. The process requires a public hearing and a resolution be adopted, which you will consider by the board, and I'd like to show you right now just a map of our current enterprise zone. I know there's a lot going on here. The, the dark blue thick line represents the boundaries of both Town of Kimornick in the north and to the south, the Town of Irvington. The light blue area is our existing enterprise zone, which hasn't changed a whole lot since the year 2000, when it was first initiated. The green areas represent the expansion areas that are the proposed additions to the enterprise zone that we will then make application to DA City for. Those include limited areas on Waverly Avenue, limited areas on Irvington Road, and limited areas on Boys Camp Road.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen, before I open it up to the floor for public, comment? All right. At this time, the floor is open up for public comment. You have three minutes. Okay.
My name is Stephen Carr. I am the president of the APYC Board, which is the Alexandria Police Youth Camps Board. We are the owners of the property that exists at 1083 Boys Camp Road, and I wanted to start by saying thank you for letting me speak. I'd also like to thank Mr. Bateman, who, when I found out about this addition last Thursday, I fired off an email to him at 5:30 on a Friday night. He called me at 6 o'clock on a Friday night, and we talked for a half an hour, and you should be proud of the fact that you have a civil servant that's quickly responds to, to somebody who doesn't even live in Lancaster County. I'm up in Alexandria. I'm an Alexandria Police Officer Lieutenant there. And I wanted to give you a short history of the Alexandria Police Youth Camp. It was founded in 1947 by officers of Alexandria. When they found that inner-city kids only saw the inner city, they wanted to get them out into the country, and they purchased the 100 acres out at Boys Camp Road in 1947 and named it after a Marine who was killed in Iwo Jima by the name of Charles Grimm. And we've had other partnerships with Boy Scouts and the like. Since then, we've put on camp, summer camps over the years, and in the mid-2000s, we've partnered up with the YMCA, who is also here in support, and we, forgive me. We, we appreciate the partnership that we have with the YMCA. I'm here to kind of set the record straight. Over the years, when you think of the property down there, you think of the YMCA, and it, what appears to have happened here is that they saw the opportunity to possibly get additional funds and then put in an application for this zone change, which we were unaware of until we read it in the newspaper that got us here. We've sent, had great conversations with Mr. Bateman and the YMCA, and we've requested that we be removed from, from that. We're not interested in changing our zoning or being a part of that, and that may have changed if we had more time to have discussed it, but within a week, our board was unable to do that. We value our partnership with the YMCA. However, the YMCA has no authority to act on behalf of the APYC in property zoning or legal matters. I'm here to set that record, record straight, as I believe that that is a common misnomer that can easily happen between the public that's down here and our organization. And we continue to have a mission of, of serving your community and the children of Lancaster County, but our children up in Alexandria, and also as a respite for police officers to, to get morale and welfare when they come down to your beautiful property in order to get away from some of the things that we have to deal with up there. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Anyone else? Anyone online? All right. Couple here and there is closed. Okay, he's no part of that. How does that affect what we have before us?
Mr. Chairman, we would simply remove that acreage from our application. This resolution authorizes county administration to make application to DA City, and we would just simply remove that acreage from the application.
All right, so as far as-
91 acres.
So as far as the resolution is concerned, that's good.
That, that, that does not need to be changed.
Okay, it does not need to be changed.
Is that correct?
Yeah. You all could pass a resolution with the condition that that acreage be removed.
All right. I understand the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I moved that the resolution be passed and be noted that the acreage for the Alexandria Police Youth Camp be removed from the application.
All right. You've heard the motion, all in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? I'm assuming ayes have it. Okay. Okay. So that motion is passed. Okay, let's move on to the next one. Consensus Docket. Mr. Geezy?
Ah, yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass the consensus docket.
All right. I've heard the motion. All in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Nay? Ayes have it. Motion passed. All right. Let's see. Salaries and invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Just load it up here. The invoices totaling an amount of $4,486,378.60. Payroll amount of $480,719.23, with a total of $4,967,978.83, of which capital improvements were $4,332,769.73.
All right. All have heard the motion. All in favor say aye? Aye?
All aye.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. Okay. All right, Mr. Resolutions Designating Certain Property Owned or Controlled by the County as Parks and Recreational Facilities. Mr. Cornwell, you out there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, this is a resolution I have coordinated with our insurance carrier, Bay Corp, which allows us to have sovereign immunity on the properties that we are developing or have developed as a, a park and recreational facilities. It's right out of the Code of Virginia, and I say that the insurance company, that Bay Corp, has signed off on this, and I would recommend it for adoption.
Okay, thank you. All right. I have a motion. I'll make that motion. I move that we adopt the resolution for the Lancaster Board of Supervisors Designating Certain Property Owned or Controlled by the County of Lancaster Parks and Recreation Facilities Pursuit to Section 15.2-1809 of the Code of Virginia. All in favor say aye? Aye?
All aye.
All right, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, your next consideration is for approving two change orders for the Norman Company for Phase 2 of the Windmill Point Project. We talked a little bit earlier about how this part of the project is nearing completion. As the work has progressed, as with any project, there are some change orders. Change order number four is for additional valves at the pier water line, lowering two existing water lines that were exposed during the construction of the new swell adjacent to the parking lot, and grading for swell between the marina pool and the beach, which is public use area, that is needed to stabilize that area from future erosion from the pool maintenance discharge. That change order totals $15,866. The last change order adds pipe bollards around the existing fire hydrant in the new parking lot. It also adds a rope barricade to keep vehicles, vehicles from accessing the beach outside of the new parking lot, and includes upgrades to the foot washing stations with automatic shut-offs and concrete pads. That change order totals $21,482. Bay Design Group, after site visits and review, has agreed and recommended all of these change orders, and to keep this project to the finish line, I would ask that you approve these change orders tonight.
All right, any questions? All right. I move that we approve the two change orders totaling $37,348. All in favor say aye? Aye?
All aye.
Okay, motion passed unanimously. Okay. Annual Engineering Services, Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, time flies. I tell you, it doesn't seem like it's been that long since we went through the RFP process and, and awarded contracts for engineering and architectural services for the county. But the engineering contract that we signed with Bay Design Group pursuant to Article 9 of that document states that the current term expires on Saturday, November 1st of 2025. However, the contract does contain options for mutually extending the contract under the same terms and conditions for three additional one-year terms. We've been generally pleased with Bay Design Services during the original contract term, and we request that the Board of Supervisors authorize the execution of the first one-year extension. Bay Design Group would like for the contract to be extended as well.
All right, have any questions? All right. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the annual engineering services contract extension with Bay Design Group under the same terms and conditions and for three additional one-year terms.
There you go.
Good. All right. All in favor of the motion say aye? Aye?
All aye.
All right, motion passed unanimously. Okay, Board Reports. Mr. Geezy, Geezy, got anything?
Yes. On appointments, I've got Keith Kidd, John Deloche, and Kevin Bean have all agreed to serve another two-year term on the broadband authorities.
All right. You've heard the appointments. All in favor of the appointments say aye? Aye?
All aye.
All right. Appointment passed unanimously. Okay. County Administrator Report.
Mr. Chairman, I got three things. First of all, the Virginia Public School Authority 2025 B Bond closed on Monday, I believe, if that was the 28th. That was for the final $15 million that had been approved, authorized back in 2023 to complete the high school. So that, that bond is closed, and money is in our SNAP account and available for use. Second thing I'd like to talk about is, we do have four members of the Board of Supervisors who will be attending the Virginia Association of Counties Annual Conference in Bath County November the 9th through November the 11th. This is an educational event for board members, and although public matters may be discussed while the board members are there, no decision or action will be taken on any matter that is discussed. And the final thing I would add is that next month, November, Thanksgiving holiday causes our meeting schedule to accelerate a little bit, so your next meeting will be on the third Thursday of November instead of the last Thursday. It'll be on November 20th at 7:00 p.m. It'll be on November 20th at 7:00 PM instead of the last Thursday.
Okay. Gentlemen, y'all have any additional questions or anything? If not, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. A majority, aye, aye?
Aye.
All right.
See y'all next week.
All right, sir.
Hey, don't, don't forget to vote for Bill Smith for District 5 Supervisor.